At 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, but we're waiting for one of our members who's on the way in. So if you give us a couple of minutes, we'll start. Thank you very much. The time is 6:01 and our CBA meeting for May is now open. Called to the regular meeting to order and need a roll call for to certify the.
Yes, sir. You've got four members, so you do have a quorum.
You do have a quorum.
And just for the purposes of the record, it's Teresa Devaya, Gary Shrum, Natasha Charles, and yourself, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from March the 3rd, 2022. Here first?
My second.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Your right hand. Those opposed? The motion carries forward to zero. Our new business for today is consideration and possible action for variance number 22-05. Sidewalk side setback variance request for a single-family residential 1R1 zoning district. The hearing is requested of Aldo and Veronica Gonzalez applicant and owner for the approval of a variance as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 2000-T to allow five-foot side setback in a single-family residential R1 district. Section 2.4.2.5, parentheses C, parentheses 2, parentheses E. The general location of the property is 2430 County Club Drive, Parlan, Texas. Staff, do you have a report?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the zoning board of adjustment. Good evening. I will let Staff Leader Patrick Bauer go over this request with you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Good evening, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Patrick Bauer with the Community Development Department. The variance before you today is to reduce the building separation requirement along specifically the northeast side setback in the R1 district. Just to mention, there is a typo. The general location is 2403 Country Club Drive. The rest of the presentation says that, but just to make note of that. And specifically with the, within the R1 district, the UDC allows for properties to reduce their side setback to five feet from the normal seven and a half foot if two conditions are met. And those two conditions are listed on the screen. And the first one is that the lot had to be platted prior to February 27th, 2006. And the second condition is that the building separation be a minimum of 15 feet between homes. So as we move through and go into the site plan later on, just I'll reintroduce those conditions as well, just to make those clear, as those are the two conditions that have to be met for the five-foot side setback. So to date, staff sent notice to, in the local newspaper, a sign was posted on the property, and a notice was sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. And to date, staff has received three phone calls asking for more information on the request. So as mentioned, the zoning of the property is single-family residential 1. And for the most part, you can see the yellow around it. It's mostly single-family residential 1, except to the northwest to some single-family residential 4, which is just a more dense single-family lots. Kind of going into the future land use of the property, the future land use is low-density residential. And the properties next, the neighboring properties to the northeast and the southwest are both low-density residential, as well as the property across the way, across Country Club Drive to the northwest is medium-density residential. And then it abuts to the southeast open space. Kind of just a little bit of a history on the property. It was originally annexed into the city in 1970. The property was platted in 1970, as well as a part of the Green Tea subdivision. And then to date, it has remained undeveloped since plating. And I believe that was a part of the golf course, or maybe the golf course, or the overarching subdivision owned the property. And they may have recently sold it off, allowing for a custom home to be built on it. It's kind of going into the surrounding uses. It's very similar to what the zoning actually is. You see single-family residential homes on three sides, and then it abuts, or it has its rear to the actual golf course. Kind of getting a view of the property from Country Club Drive, as mentioned, is an undeveloped property. And it has both those properties to either side that are single-family homes. And these are those two homes to the northeast and to the southwest of the property. Then as we look across Country Club Drive to the northwest, we see more single-family residential homes, kind of on smaller lots, but they're still single-family residential homes. So here's the proposed site plan, and we'll focus in more actually on the setbacks in the next slide. But it's proposed to be approximately, I believe, a 4,344 potentially square foot. That includes first and second floor, I believe. And later on, the property owner can further divulge if you have questions about that. But this is the site plan for the property. And if you go to the next slide, Mohammed, getting specifically into what they are requesting, as mentioned, the two conditions are that for five-foot setback to be allowed is that the property be platted prior to February 27th, 2006, and that the building separation between the two homes would be 15 feet. And I'll kind of take this in two parts. So the one on your left of the screen, that's the, I believe, one moment, that is the northeast property line, the one that is the subject of the variance. Then the other property line is the southwest property line. And kind of going first with the southwest property line, they will be providing a 10-foot side setback on that side of the property. So not only is the property platted prior to 2006, it's platted in 1970, they'll also be meeting that 15-foot of building separation on the southwest property line. And now, as we move towards the left of the screen, that is the northeast property line. And that's where they're proposing the five-foot side setback, which with the neighboring property would be a five-foot, five-inch setback. And it adds up to a 10-foot, five-inch of building separation. And if you look at the site, if we look at a typical single-family residential one site or property, it would be, the normal requirement for a side setback would be seven and a half feet on one side and seven and a half feet on the other side, which would approximately add up, not approximately, it would add up to 15 feet of a side setback, which you would not be able to build in. In the case of this property, their subject property, or not their subject, their neighboring properties to either side did a five-foot and then approximately a five-foot, five-foot, five-inch. So if you're going by the letter of the code, they would have to provide a 10-foot on each side, thus making them have 20 feet of side setback, and making them have to have five more than what your typical R1 lot would have to be. So thus, the five-foot side setback is to be a variance so that they're not, they're providing the 15 feet that would be normally required of any other property. Kind of looking at the criteria for approval for a variance, staff found that the variance met all of the approval criteria. And specifically, while there isn't an actual physical hardship such as the floodplain being closed, or some type of kind of deep, like grading of the property that makes it harder to build on portion of it, it's more of a regulatory hardship. Most people, they have seven and a half-foot side setbacks. So they have that 15 feet where they're not able to build. But they're actually would be required to have 20 feet of side setbacks, which we see as a regulatory hardship. It should also be mentioned that five-foot side setbacks have been approved in Shadow Creek and Savannah Heights. Those are planned developments, but the five-foot side setback has been approved. And that five-foot, if you give five-foot on each side, you would come out to about, you'd come out to 10 feet of building separation. So just to mention as well, if approved, the applicant would still be required to meet all other development regulations of the R1 district, as well as meeting building, fire safety, and engineering requirements. So staff recommends approval of the requested variance to reduce the minimum building separation for a five-foot side setback along the northeast property line of the, of the property. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Do we have an applicant presentation? No? Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for or against the requested variance? Nope. Thank you very much. Do we have a staff and board questions?
I have one. If you would refresh my memory again, when, I apologize for asking such a simple question. When we're measuring these setbacks, we're measuring from the brick wall or the wall of the structure, nothing to do with the overhang of the roof. Is that correct?
Correct.
I want to make sure I understand. On the right side, there will be 15 feet between the proposed wall and the wall of the neighbor. And on the other side, the left side, there'll be 10 feet, five inches between the proposed wall and the wall of the neighbor.
That is correct.
And has the neighbor that's going to be only ten, little over 10 feet away from the proposed property, have they contacted the city or responded to any notice?
Not to date. There are people who reached out. They didn't say their address, so I can't confirm if it specifically was them.
So the normal setback, though, you said would be allowed, normally would be seven and a half feet. Did I read that wrong in the presentation?
Yes.
So if we move the right, if we move the house a little to the right, wouldn't that get us to seven and a half feet on the setback, an additional two and a half feet setback on the left side of the property line? Is my math wrong there?
No, you're not wrong. If you move the building, if you shift the entire building footprint, then you still need to get a variance on the other side, because that would have been 12 and a half feet.
Seven and a half, though, is that wrong? On each side?
Right. The building separation is still not going to be met on either side.
Okay, all right.
If they shifted the property as you're suggesting, you would need two variances, one for the left-hand side and one for the right-hand side. And this one, all of the variance is too close to the garage. It's not too close to the, maybe too close is not the way to describe it. It's not within the prescribed distance of the garage, but it's well over the prescribed distance to the home.
What was the proposed square footage of the anticipated home?
From the plans, it showed it was 4,344, and the applicant may confirm that for me. That's what I saw in the plans.
Going back to one of the questions that Mr. Devaya asked earlier, what were some of the concerns? You said that persons who had reached out to you hadn't disclosed their addresses. What were some of the concerns?
There really wasn't any concerns. They were more asked whenever they called. They were requesting what was happening there. Because when we see a sign, we want to know what's happening. And I mentioned there was a custom home, and I explained that they were trying to get the, basically, the five-foot setback. And the specific part is the building separation. I told them that one side has five-foot, five inches, the other has five. And for which they didn't have any concerns after that.
Are most of the other homes, possibly all of the other homes in that subdivision, 15 feet apart, wall-to-wall or not?
No, ma'am. I believe that if this were constructed when all the other homes were constructed, it would have been to the regulation that was in existence at the time, which would have allowed, I think, this exact thing to happen without the need for a ZBA. And which is in part why staff's recommending approval of this, because it's kind of common in that area.
Thank you.
Sir?
We've, we've already passed the, the part where the public's allowed to open, to speak. Sir?
Yes, sir. We understand what you're saying. However, there was a call for public comment. We can only move forward in the agenda. We cannot move back in the agenda.
Thank you very much. This closes the, this part. And now we're open to the board discussion and possible action. Anybody have any questions? Can you please put the motion recommendation? Teresa, would you mind?
I move to approve VARZ 22-05 as presented.
Second.
You can vote those in favor up. Please raise your right hand. Those opposed? The motion carries forward to zero. Moving on to consideration, possible action for variance number 22-06, special exemption to consider a new accessory structure on a property with existing non-conformities at the request of inner land surveying and mapping applicant on behalf of Susie Brier, owner to allow a special exception as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 2000-T to allow the construction of a new accessory structure on the property with non-conformities in a single-family residential 1R1 district, section 2.7, 3.7. The property is generally located at 3206 Patricia Lane, Parlan, Texas. Staff, do you have a report?
Patrick, take it over.
Thank you, Mohammed. So as mentioned, the special exception is to construct a new accessory structure on a property with an existing non-conformity at 3206 Patricia Lane. Specifically, the non-conformity is in relation to the main structure, and it's specifically in relation to the side setback for the main structure. That's the non-conformity that I will go into further later on in the slides. So staff posted the notice and the request in the local newspaper, and signs were also posted on the property. And all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property were notified of the request. To date, we received one comment, or I meant one written comment against, and two phone calls against, and then two phone calls for more information. And specifically, the concerns were more about the location of the building being closer to the road, the, probably the size of the building, the material of the building, as well as any like drainage concerns about adding a building of that size, as well as, I believe, from the creek, different rodents and animals come up during flood times and creating another structure where they could inhabit and come out. So kind of going into the zoning of the property, as mentioned, is single-family residential 1. And all the properties around it are also zoned, single-family residential 1. In addition, the subject property, as well as all the properties around it, are our future land use of low-density residential. Kind of some history on the property. It was annexed into the city in 1960, and then the single-family dwelling was actually built in 1989. The property is built so long ago that it's likely that the, there wasn't a plating requirement then, possibly. So the property is actually currently being platted before it can actually even develop anything on the property. So kind of looking at the surrounding uses, as mentioned, the zoning is a single-family residential 1. And all the uses around it reflect that with single-family residential homes, as well as, I believe, there's a little garden off to the, approximately the northeast of the property. So kind of getting a look of the property. Here's the home on the left-hand side. And the, it may be hard to see in this image, but the property stretches over to a garden area that's further off in the right. And the actual accessory structure will go, as you see the driveway, it'll go further back along where the driveway continues to. And you'll see it on the site plan in a little. And here's more of a centralized view of the property, going back to the back of the property. And here's a view of the properties that are adjacent to it. So we get a single-family home on the southwest side. And to the northeast, you see the little garden, but there's also another home on the other side of that. And then across Patricia Lane to the southeast is also more single-family homes. So going into the proposed site plan, this is actually a new site plan based on the requirement of accessory structures that they be pushed back. Basically, this type of accessory structure is more storage, and storage accessory structures are to be pushed back behind what is termed as the forwardmost rear face of the building. So shown with that red dashed line is where it's supposed to be pushed back. And I believe the previous site plan had it pushed further up. But even if it were to get approved today, it would still be required to meet the accessory structure requirements when it comes for residential permitting. So this proposed site plan reflects more of what would actually or could actually be allowed if approved tonight. So the existing, before I move forward, the actual structure on the property is 1,822 square feet, which on properties, they're either allowed to have, they're allowed to have accessory structures that are either 5% of the lot area or 50% of the livable area. And that structure is just below the 5% of the lot area. And so the existing non-conformity, as I mentioned, pertains specifically to the main structure. pertains specifically to the main structure that is close to the side property line. The requirement is that it be seven and a half feet, and the property at points, it's about six feet, about 5.9 feet. So with that existing nonconformity, the special exception is required for any new structure to be put on a property with a nonconformity. So kind of the, this is the criteria for approval of a special exception, and basically, something has to meet one of these special exception criteria for it to even come before the board. And this request meets criteria for that construction of a new structure on the same property where a nonconformity already exists, whether it's a nonconformity in an existing structure or of the property itself, provided the new structure assumes the existing nonconforming status, and no nonconforming use is expanded into the structure. So with that, staff approves the requested special exception, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Is there any, the applicant wishing to make a presentation? And sir, have you filled out a form with your address and?
No, sir, I did not. But I can fill one out when I'm done. I'll do that, make sure.
Do you mind stating your name and address prior to starting?
Yes, sir. I'm Andrew Alaman with Interland Mapping and Surveying. Our address is 401 Stude Wood, Suite 309 in Houston, Texas. So we're here representing the applicant's interest on the property. Of course, like the staff said, the nonconformity is on the existing structure that was built in 1989. The homes existed in the subdivision in that state since that time. This is two lots that are going to be replatted into one, the associated plat that was mentioned as well. And this accessory structure is going to be pushed behind that primary structure. So with all those different conditions in play, we feel that the variance is justified. It will have no negative impact on the neighborhood, again, with the plat joining the two lots together, and then the nonconformity not being expanded on the principal structure. And so with those pieces in mind, we ask for your approval, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed variance request? If, have you filled out a form also? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm Susie Smolovich, I'm the Susie Smolovich Bray.
Would you mind stating your name and address and getting closer to the mic? Thank you very much.
I'm Susie Smolovich Bray. I am the owner of the property, and this gentleman from Interland has pretty well stated what it is that we want. And I think what concerned people initially was in the original drawings, the structure was going to be closer to the road, but that was because they thought that that was okay. Pearland found the mistake, notified them, and they have since set it back. The shaded-in areas, the structure itself, but we are allowed to have it. We have .9 acres of a piece of property there, so I don't see how it would have any kind of negative impact, because there are other buildings on that street, and that street is the subdivision, so to speak. There are other buildings. There are other buildings that are closer to the road that are of the same type of structure, building material. There are some others that are there that are larger of the same type of building material. And then there's the houses that are there. So it's, you know, the use of the land allowed by statute, the ability to use my own land, and it's not going to be outside of anything that isn't already there. It's not going to bring the property values down. It's probably going to bring my property value up. So I just, I don't know what the problem is. I understand they're talking about rodents and, I don't know, drainage and things like that. All of that has to be addressed with the engineer before the city will even approve the plan. So the city's not going to approve a plan where we're going to create a flood problem. So I don't, I don't think that that's a valid issue. And I think the, many people around there who have these buildings and who have, that back up to us on Regal Oaks, that have accessory buildings, they're going to have the same problem. You just, if you have rodents, you have rodents. I don't want rodents in my stuff. It's going to be for storage, so I'm certainly going to treat that. But I don't think it's going to bring anything new to that neighborhood that isn't already there.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
You have the speaker card, member Acosta?
I do?
Yes.
Randy? And sir, we do ask that you limit your conversation to three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Randy Beeman. I live at 3201 Patricia Lane and have lived there since 1990. You know, since we walked in today, you know, first off, I came in here, I'm definitely, was definitely opposed to this because the original plot put the building kind of where you would put a house, you know, and not, you know, not where you put a storage shed. And I read through, and there was a few points I had a problem with. First off, I have an 1,800-square-foot building in the back of my property, built in 1993. I had to get signed affidavits from the houses on either side, from Susie's mom and dad, the Chimmelwigs who used to occupy that house, and from Tom and Payne that live adjacent to the garden. And the reason was, they wanted me to get affidavits from anyone who lived, who bordered my property, and anyone who would be able to see my property from their house, or see that building, rather. This was not done. We had, you know, and I've met Susie 30 years ago, probably, and my kids grew up with her niece and nephews and stuff. No one came and talked to us. Nobody. I saw the sign in the yard. I assumed they're, okay, you're going to put a metal building in the back of the property. And we do appreciate all the work that she's been done, because that house for the last seven years has been a bit of an eyesore and in a state of disrepair. We have shipping containers in the back of the property and stuff, and that's, all right, it's in the back of the property. But, you know, if she's changed the location of this building, and if that is written in stone, I think a lot of us may reconsider. But I don't understand exactly where the building is right now. What I do know is that as it was originally planned, I would walk out my front door, and I'm going to see a big metal building right there. You know, I see grass and trees right now, and I've seen grass and trees for 30 years. You know, these are shipping containers that have been with the neighborhood for the last, I don't know, four years maybe or so, three years. Been a while. And I understand that, and we were thrilled when we saw all this new work being done. But there again, the location of that building is not acceptable. And as per this notification, and as per, you know, what, all the information y'all sent us and was available online, I would be against that. So unless something, you know, unless, I mean, if you want me to say yes, and possibly some other peoples to say yes, we need to start this all over again.
Sir, thank you very much. Your time has been up.
But?
But I appreciate your comment.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this variance request? Sir, have you filled out one of these forms? Okay, I appreciate it.
Can you hear me all right with the mask on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Michael Adams, and I live at 3207 Regal Oaks Drive, and I'm directly behind that property. There's a few little bushes and trees there, but when I step out my back door, I'm looking at grass and trees and houses across the street on Patricia. I think I speak for quite a few people here that when we moved into this area, these are dead-end streets, Patricia and Regal Oaks Drive. It's a very quiet, serene atmosphere. And for me to step out my door and have to look at a big building is not really a pleasant atmosphere any longer. The other thing that I'm not sure if the folks really understand about that particular area on both sides, Patricia and over on Regal Oaks, is the grade goes down considerably as you get further down the street towards the creek. And so what happens is, when we get a heavy rain, and we get these all the time, there's a foot and a half deep of water that goes right down through between those two properties and goes clear across Tom's property, almost clear out to the street, five-foot-wide river just running through there. So I think if we're going to be doing something with a building here, we should be considering that we're putting a lot of metal on an area of land that's already having trouble absorbing the water when we have a pretty heavy rain. And it's pretty often, it doesn't have to be a drastic downfall to get this flood condition that I'm talking about going between all these properties right there. And I've had to have the city come down and unplug the drain. It's just, oh, it's probably about 500, 600 feet from my house towards the creek. Have to have them come down and clean out that grate just to keep the water, you know, flowing as it should. And even when it's cleaned out, we still have this flooding problem going between my house and the new proposed building, between Tom's house and the proposed building. I just don't know if anyone's taken the time to actually look into how much flooding does occur in that section of that property.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else? And by the way, lady right there will give you the form to fill out. I appreciate it.
Mr. Adams and Mr. Alaman, outside that double door, that's where you'll find the yellow sheet of paper on a table there. So I would be sure to follow up with that. We thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Denhobel. I live at 3216 Patricia Lane. I'm two properties over, my next, well, third, I'm the third property, barely in the 200th easement. And so I want to reiterate a few things, too. I understand about the building and everything. I'm hoping the city will make sure the building's put back at the property so we'll have a visual aesthetics when you drive down the neighborhood on the thing. Once again, I'm concerned the city needs to be well aware of where this building's going to be placed. The drainage area starts at my house, goes through my neighbor's, next-door neighbor to the right, through Al's property, and goes all the way down, going down to Tom's property. It's quite, during the last hurricane, there was quite a bit of water in here, almost a foot, foot and a half of water in this area where this place is going to be. I'm letting, I want to let, make sure the city understands. Somebody from the city needs to come out, look at this place before they go ahead and allow them to build a building and come up with something for drainage, because it's going to happen. Your neighbors, these neighbors, which are all these people here, are over here all concerned about this. We're also concerned about the storage containers. Already, there are three to four storage containers in that backyard already in the drainage flood plain. I don't know why they have storage containers. By all means, we'd like, there's also brush and everything along that back area. I'm just concerned. It's going to affect my flooding. It's going to concern Al Strick, the next-door neighbor to us. It's going to concern us all, this issue about flooding. It's going to be put in a bad place. I'm asking the city, y'all need to come out and do your dues and ensure that we're not going to have flood issues and be up here complaining later. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against the variance request? Okay, so we're closed, and move on to the staff and board questionnaire.
I have a question. So the proposed site plan that is on the screen right now that shows the proposed metal lining storage being 95.2 feet behind, it appears, the roadway. Was that the proposed site plan that was published online as part of the official notice for today's hearing?
The answer is no. We do not actually publish the site plan as part of the notice that goes out. It will, it was only published as part of the staff report that was included on the city's website. It was not included in the notice that went to the neighbors and as well as to the newspaper.
Was there a different site proposed, proposed site plan on the website?
Right. When the staff report was published about a week ago, it had a different site plan that has a different location for the building. Since that time, the staff reached out to the applicant and notified them about the requirement that this storage building has to be within the back portion of the property. And they went ahead and worked with their surveyor and were able to update the site plan and submit that site plan to us today. And the one that you see on the screen, this is the revised one. And this is the one that will meet the city requirement for location.
And so I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, because there have been several people, in fact, I believe everyone that has spoken today, other than the applicant, have opposed what was provided on the website before today. And if any of the public, upon receiving notice of today's hearing or this application, wanted to see what was going to be proposed, all of the information available on the website would have, at least as far as the site plan, would have been something different than what we're seeing today. And so I'm wondering whether, as a board, we have the authority today to be considering something different than what the general public would have gone to look at on the website. So my question is, before today, did the general public have the ability to see this new proposed website? Or could they only see the old one?
The general public would only see the old site plan that has since been updated. That site plan is illustrative only. It actually is not required in the notice for the posting to comply with the Open Meetings Act or with Chapter 211 of the, 211 of the Local Government Code. The issue before the board is in regards to the current existing house and the setback on the current existing house. The proposed storage, you would not be able to put anything on a new, on a piece of property if you have something that violates a current law. That house violates the current standard. However, the city of Pearland and the state of Texas both agree that you should have the ability to get a special exception if the structure was legally existing when it was built. The house was built in compliance with the rules in existence at the time. The rules changed. The house didn't move too far to the left. The rules changed, and the house is now within that side setback. So the purpose of today's hearing is in regards to the home. Is there a legally existing nonconforming side setback issue? Yes. That needs the board's approval, and under criteria four, it fits the board's approval. Now, if they tried to move the proposed storage building all the way to the left in the side setback, that would be a different issue. And it would not meet today's standard under number four for the special exception. If they tried to move it up in the front, they would need your permission, because it is in front of the, the rear setback line or the rear building line. That is not what they're here for today. They're not here today for the drainage, as several members, as the written comment that was shared with you, and several people in the audience said to you. That's not the exception that they're looking for, and that's not what we're looking at today. The only issue that the board is looking at today is... The only issue that the board is looking at today is, will you grant a special exception for that legally existing non-conforming structure that was already on the site to allow expansion on the property? And the expansion will have to comply with all the rules the city has, including being behind the front, I'm sorry, the rear building line, being within the 5% of the original building size or the square footage for the original building. It has to comply with all the setback issues and all of those other types of, and the drainage regulations, it has to comply with all the other rules. We're not here talking about the new building, they just need the approval from the old building before they can put a new building on the site.
If we were to approve this today, there would be, we would not be making a comment on where that metal structure would be. They could put it, assuming they comply, but if we prove it today, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will put that metal storage building in this particular place. They could choose it to put it somewhere else, they might need additional approvals, but if we prove it today, they could put, they could choose to put that additional metal siding storage building somewhere other than what's reflected in the current proposed site plan.
Yes, ma'am, they could. But it would have to be in compliance whatever rules you have. Now, it is also possible that, some people say it's a boots and suspenders kind of approach and you're welcome to add boots and suspenders to it. You can make a condition of your approval be that the, any accessory structures, and then name the condition. Be behind the building line. Be X number of feet, be X number of square feet. Theoretically, you could say that it has to be painted pink and yellow, but, you know, the city wouldn't recommend you add those types of conditions because the condition is always going to be that it has to comply with the code. But if the concern that you're hearing from the community is that the original proposal was in front of the rear building line, you can, that, you can have that as a condition that the accessory structure be behind the rear building line.
Well, and from what I'm hearing, our scope of, the scope of what we're considering is, is limited. It's concerning the house. However, because of the amount of public response, and we have quite a few people here today, several people who have spoken in opposition, in addition to an email in opposition and some phone calls in opposition, I'm concerned about the notice requirement and making changes and design issues that are not within the scope of this particular variance request. If we do not approve it today, can the applicant reapply once everything has been finally determined by the applicant?
The new application will be exactly the same as the application you have today because it's still for that special exception. Because the site plan is illustrative and because it is not part of the approval and the approval is not tied to that site plan, if you turn it down today and the applicant gives a new application, they're still coming in for the same special exception and because it would be the same project, if you denied it today, the city would say that that is a, the same application that you've already made a determination on. And the city would not accept that application. Because, you know, how many times can somebody come in front of you with the same exact project? That's, that's the way that some people try to get around a, the deadline for an appeal. Oh, I'll just file the same project. I missed my deadline, so I'm going to file the same project and then let you appeal that new decision. Well, it has to be a different application. If they came in and the site plan was different, that's not a different application because the application is really, or the special exception for the side setback, not the site plan.
However, if we were presented with this application and the proposed building was closer to the street, would that affect the city's recommendation and the factors that we need to consider to approve the application?
It would not affect your factors because the site plan is not what you're approving. Would it affect the city's application? Yes, we would say that you need a, an additional special exception to the applicant before they come in and get a building permit. Because if they moved that building, that proposed building forward, it does not meet the city's design criteria. It doesn't, it's not in conformance with the Unified Development Code. So they would need to have a new application for the, the site layout, but that's not what we're here for today.
All right. Just to be, I want to be clear just because it's an important issue and year two along.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We, I appreciate you making sure it's clear what the issue the board is deciding, and I think it needs to be clear to the public, what issue the board is deciding and whether or not it meets that criteria. I think it's also important for the public to understand that that red line that's on the, the screen, that is how, according to the code that's currently adopted, that is the closest that the building could be to the road. It has to be behind that rear building line.
So if we were to approve the application today and there was an attempt to build that metal structure closer to the road, would the city allow that?
No, that building permit would be denied.
Well, it, technically, the owner could build the building up to the rear line. So he could, they could move it forward five feet.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. They could build, well, I think we're saying build up to the red line.
Yes, build up to the red line. So yes, I mean, the owner has that option. They're still being compliant at that point.
Mr. Alaman, would you mind going to the podium and stating the same?
I knew better. We're definitely okay with adding the condition to put the line where we're annotating it right now, so even further behind the red dash line, I think it's like 95.2 feet. We're definitely okay with setting that as a condition so that if they did try to come back in later and do something, you know, weird, the conditional approval that you've granted today would be locked into that location at least as far back as 95 feet. So we understand that that's a sensitivity and we're definitely willing to abide by that.
Thank you very much.
And I would also note that there's, these are two lots, and so by replating them together, we're actually helping the density of the neighborhood. So another home could be built further to the northeast. Part of this whole entire project is to combine them into one lot and then hopefully that will, you know, alleviate some drainage concerns because it will be a lesser density with no home on the northern lot.
Has, has that been finalized? Is this already combined into one lot or is it still two lots?
I believe it's still in the plating process. Right now it is still, well, right now, the property was never platted. So right now, it sits as two lots, maybe through meets and bounds. They're basically plating the property into this one lot.
If this is, as we sit here today, two separate lots, then the percentages as, don't come into compliance, they only come into compliance after the two lots have been combined into one lot?
Yes and no. Again, the application is for the special exception on the left-hand side. So they are concurrently running the plating process. That has not been finalized yet, but there's no legal reason to deny a plat to combine two lots. That is a ministerial act by the Planning and Zoning Commission and that, actually, that's done through a, a minor plat that is done through the planning department. It doesn't even have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So even though the officially, the two lots have not, as we sit here today, been combined, for our purposes, we can treat them as being combined because there are just some ministerial technicalities to finalize the process that will definitely be finalized.
So if an application came in just for that accessory structure, if a permit application came in just for the accessory structure and there was not separation of the lots, if they kept it as two separate lots and there's no building on that other lot, that application would be denied because you cannot build an accessory structure without a primary structure. So they would have to come in with a building permit on that other structure first. And if the hope was to build that same structure, that would not happen because it would not comply with all the setback requirements if it had a house in front of it because it would be too close to this building. Well, I'd have to double-check the, the dimensions, but I think if I was looking at it correctly, that, that's the way that I would look at it. So that can't happen. You have to have a primary structure before you get an accessory structure. Well, that could happen concurrently because people will build their detached garage at the same time, but that's allowed.
And is the staff recommendation conditional upon the proposed structure being built behind the red line?
No, we have not put any condition. This is a requirement, a city requirement that, that we will enforce when they apply for the permit and that, but if you choose to adopt this condition, that this structure will be 95 feet away from the property line, that is definitely something that we would enforce. I would also like to add that according to our record, as of right now, this property is one track right now. It's not official two lots, so it's just one track according our, to our GIS map. So eventually, they intend to combine that and it's going through that plating process right now to be one lot.
Does the applicant currently own both lots?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
The one thing that I would caution, while I appreciate Mr. Alaman and the applicant saying 95 feet and their willingness, if you choose to adopt a condition and the condition is either X number of feet or where the red line is as defined as the rear property line, I would encourage you to go with the rear property, I'm sorry, the rear building line. The reason being, the final plat has not been approved combining those two lots, it has not been platted. I don't know if there is a dedication required for Patricia Lane. And if you say 95 feet from the property line and they have to do two feet, one feet, I don't care what it is, it could end up pushing it even further back. And I believe in the law of unintended consequences surfacing when you don't expect it to. So I would say if you're going to adopt a condition, make the condition the same as what the law requires, which is it cannot be in front of the rear building line.
As we sit here today, staff is recommending without a condition and with assurances that any additional structures would have to either obtain special exceptions or otherwise comply with the law.
Thanks, Teresa. I've got a couple of questions if I could. Staff, could you go to the slide, previous slide to the one that says proposed site plan? I'm looking, whoa, whoa, right there. Main structure is within the seven-six side setback and what did you say that distance is now? The non-conforming, non-conformity that's there exists, how much?
Right. Yeah, the required side setback is seven and a half and the current building is located about six feet away from the property line.
So a foot or two is what we're, what we're talking about here. Now, that's the existing non-conformity.
Exactly.
Okay. I apologize, I'm really confused as I was reading through the material packet we got. There's a couple of places in here. It says the applicant is requesting a special exception to allow for the construction of a new accessory structure on a property with an existing non-conformity, then under staff recommendation. The last sentence says, "Staff recommends approval of the special exception request to allow for the construction of a new accessory structure on a property with existing non-conformity." So we're, we, are we or are we not, is our purpose here tonight to reapprove, I guess, the existing non-conformity of six feet you said? Or are we here tonight to talk about the new construction, a new accessory structure? Which of those two are we voting on tonight?
It is to a, to prove the special exception for the house that is non-conforming today that would enable them, that will lead them to be able to build accessory structure because if this exception for the existing non-conformity now being approved, they will not be able to build accessory structure.
Got you, got you. I guess the terminology is, is what threw me there. That's, that's what, I've got just, I have two questions for the applicant if, and I apologize, I've forgotten your name, sir.
Andrew, sir. Andrew, Mr. Alaman, either one, sir.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. I recall that one of the comments from someone speaking tonight talked about the existence of some containers, cargo containers, I think. Are there, are there a bunch of, a bunch, that's the wrong word, are there cargo containers already on this property in the back there?
I believe there are some Conexes, some temporary storage containers on the property. That's part of the reason why the applicant wants to get a permanent building so they can, you know, mitigate some of those storage needs on the property. And so they may, may not have those in the future. So, but there are some Conexes, yes, sir. I understand that that's correct, right, ma'am?
Okay. Are those?
Temporary buildings, sir.
So staff has found out about those shipping containers and we reached out to the applicant and the property owner and they promised that these shipping containers will be removed from the property. I can confirm at this point that these shipping containers have been removed or not, but they, they indicated that they will be removed permanently from the property.
Okay. Back to the applicant if I could. Will the applicant then accept the condition, a condition, two conditions tonight if we approve this? The first condition would be that the billing structure would be behind, or the new accessory building structure would be behind the existing build line whenever the plating is finished and the condition that all of the temporary structures, whatever they may be, these, I forgot what you called the.
Conexes, sir.
Yeah, all those will be removed permanently.
Yes, sir, that's fine, perfectly fine.
Is there anything about this new building that's going to contribute to flooding or add water flow or something? I didn't understand all the comments about water flow, but I, is the billing going to add to that somehow?
There's, there's, when you have impervious cover on a development tract, there's always some finite, you know, impact on drainage. The, the best thing about it permitted structures, it has to go through all the code required reviews. So footings, all, all the side structures, it goes through all the code required things, but the Conex says don't. So would you see? So when you see these situations where we're trading off these temporary storage buildings or permanent storage buildings, you typically get a positive impact in the development around there. So that's the idea, is to get rid of something temporary that's not reviewed, replace it with something that's permanent that is reviewed.
Is this accessory building a two-story or a one-story?
One, correct. Is it one? That's correct. One-story.
One-story, okay. That was never clear from all the diagrams there. Is there a question in the applicant's mind, any question at all, as to whether or not this accessory structure will move laterally, more behind the home, or away from the home? Or is... Are these measurements, as we have here on this diagram tonight, are those where it's going to be as far as laterally with respect to the house or the driveway?
I think, sir, that where it's shown is where it's going to be sat. I mean, I think the only way it could change is maybe move closer to the home, which would be better for the neighbor. But right now, as it's situated, this is where we're having it permitted. Of course, that's predicated on the plat being done. But right now, it's pretty well situated where it's at.
Okay. I think of the four or five things I wrote down, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Schrum, if your intent is to include an additional condition in regards to the removal of the temporary accessory storage buildings, I would encourage you to adopt a timeframe for that that you seem reasonable. Instead of it being instantly, everybody knows that it's supposed to happen in 10 days, 15 days, or 30 days. Typically, if we tell somebody you have to move something, we tell them when they need to move it by so that staff then knows when they can enforce a regulation.
Would we... How do you authority to set those types of conditions on personal property?
You can set that type of a condition on personal property. If those Conex boxes are currently there being stored, and they are not in compliance with the city's zoning regulations, code enforcement may require something different. So you might give them 45 days, and code enforcement might say, "No, it's illegal, it's illegal, it's illegal. We give you time for compliance. That time is X." The building officials, on the other hand, when they approve the permits, they could say, "Okay, well, this was conditionally approved on X. It's not now here." So now, they have different... The building official has different authority than code enforcement when looking at something like that. So I'm not saying that you can... I'm not saying it's illegal. I haven't looked at that situation. I'm just, if your goal is to adopt that condition, I think that you can do so.
I suppose, as the building stands right now, because we are currently replating the land, correct? Do we know if the applicant has had any interaction with code enforcement from the city?
Not to my knowledge. The applicant can tell you a little better than me.
Ms. Bay, I appreciate you speaking, but this is being recorded, and in order to record it, we need you at the microphone. Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry about that. At this point, no, we have received no citations or notices of any violations of the code.
And then, just in terms of the current structure that is being proposed, I do note that this neighborhood itself backs up onto Clay Creek. Are we taking into account any drainage impact?
Those will be taken into account during the permit process.
I want to clarify that a little bit more. As you can see in our recommendation, that all of the engineering and all of the other city codes will be complied with. And unfortunately, our city engineer could not make this meeting tonight. But one of the things that they will have to submit as part of their permit is a drainage plan, and that drainage plan will require them to detain a certain amount of water on the property before it can be released to whether the street or the creek. So a drainage study, drainage plan, will have to be submitted in conjunction with the permit for the new structure.
Am I able to ask a question of someone else who's already spoken?
We've moved past Adams.
If the chair allows it, it is possible. However, public comment, if it's just general public comment, that's not there. If you need something, you can ask the chair to allow you to ask that person to respond, and then it would be in the chairs, or acting chairs. It's in Mr. Acosta's discretion.
So the only questions we can ask would be of the applicant, because I know there had been some questions that the board asked and the applicant, the applicant representative spoke.
Again, that would be within Mr. Acosta's discretion. You would have to ask him if you can ask that question. He could determine whether or not it's relevant, and then he can say, "Yes, I'll allow it" or not.
I have one follow-up question for Mr. Beaman that spoke earlier.
Randy? Yes, sir.
My name is Randy Beaman.
Yeah. My question is, the board has asked several questions of the applicant that have been answered by the applicant and of the applicant's representative that has been answered by the applicant's representative. Do any of those responses or other considerations that we've been discussing affect what you have stated earlier?
It raises questions. The biggest thing, first off, we came here today based upon the one-page form you sent us in the mail, and what was on the City of Pearland website. What's on the website included building a building, you know, construction of a building. It talked about why they couldn't put the building behind the house, that they said they... There's a comment in there that says they would have to tear down the house to put a storage building in the back.
And, sir, I don't mean to interrupt, but I've obviously exercised my right to ask the existing chair to grant me the ability to ask you a very limited question. So I want to make sure I'm respectful of that leeway that the chair has granted to me today. My question is, have any of the answers that the applicant and the representative given to our questions, or any of the commentary that we've made after the initial presentations, has it affected or changed your opinion and comments that you made earlier?
As it stands right now, no, it has not. If y'all present a more correct plan, then we could consider that. But the plan that was presented, no, I find unacceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I have one more question of staff, or Lawrence, I'm not sure. If we have a condition where we're stipulating a timeframe to remove the temporary building, how do I say where that, as of the last what, it's got to be removed by? I mean, what's... When is the... How do you say when the structure's finished? I mean, who says it's finished or it's not finished? How do you determine that? Is there a final code enforcement inspection date where somebody comes out, signs off on it, or how does that work?
I'm trying to think of how they phrase it in the International Building Code, but there is a permit. The permit gets approved, and I would say, once the permit is finalized or closed out.
When you mean, the permit is finalized?
Finalized. That's the term that they use in the building permit division, which is, its last inspection was done, and somebody has approved it.
And so they can move in, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
It's a turnkey's finished?
So with it being an accessory building, I don't believe they issue a certificate of occupancy for an accessory building. They just do an inspection and say, "Finalled."
If I said approval, inspection approval is final, would that... Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I assume applicant is okay with using that terminology of... We all... What I don't want to have is some sort of disagreement or misunderstanding of when the count starts, so to day, so to speak. This is day one, this is day two. You know, I want a date or a way to determine that date.
That condition of removing those containers, if they are allowed to be there legally, are we allowed to ask for them to be removed as a condition of this variance? I'm not quite following that.
Theoretically, you could attach that as a condition to this variant, especially... I'm sorry, this special exception. It's a special exception, not a variant. You could have that as a condition to this special exception. Whether you want to include that because you think that's a fundamental property light, as long as it's compliant with current code, that's your choice. I'm not making an opinion as to whether or not that is compliant. I haven't been presented that issue by our code enforcement. I haven't delved into those regulations. But the applicant has said, in their intent, in their purpose, that it was to remove those temporary storage buildings.
That is correct, but in the discussions, there was a mention of removing them forever and not allowing any temporary, any...
Yes, sir. And I would encourage you to vote on those two possible amendments separately, because in my mind, based on the comments that I've heard from the members of the ZBA, at least one of those may pass and one of those might not. So I would encourage you to take two separate votes on those issues, because I completely understand your concern. Is it a condition you can attach? Yes. Is it a condition you should attach? I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Along those lines, getting back to notice and the scope of our role here today, the notice and the proposal and the recommendation by the city had no mention of containers or personal property. And the scope of what we do as a ZBA board does not typically, in my limited experience, concern personal property, and certainly things that were not mentioned on the notice, the presentation, nor the recommendation of the city. So I don't know whether we want to consider making handling of personal property and items that may or may not be the concern of city agencies or enforcement agencies that might become an issue.
The reason I raise the issue is, I'm going to say, three years ago, we had a property on McGinnis, east side of Pearland, and the question was, how many temporary structures can you have? And of those temporary structures, which ones need to be, have a special license or approval? I forgot the address. I drive by it every once in a while. So I kind of equated, when somebody says a shipping container, that's a big piece of metal sitting out there. People use those for garages, they've used them as, you know, permanent storage areas. They're big. So my way of thinking, and why I looked over at staff hall ago, was, does staff want to think about maybe requiring a license for this or an exception for these types of structures if we've got a bunch of them out there? And I'm sorry, I don't know how many there were. There may be just one for all I know, but if we're talking about permanent structures, comparing what we had to vote on on that property on McGinnis Street, we need to vote on those, and we need to be... The city needs to be aware of those structures and how they might be used in the future because they're big structures. And that was my concern.
And to answer your comment, that is totally appropriate. The Unified Development Code has a maximum of three accessory structure per residential property. So we made the property owner aware that they have limitations of three accessory structures. So with this being added, ultimately, they have to remove them. So it's appropriate, if you want to adopt that condition, and that's totally appropriate. If you don't adopt that condition, city staff is still going to go after that and look to see whether if they exceed the maximum three or not. And if they do, then we will definitely ask them to remove those.
So the city has all the notice they need. We don't need to address it. Would that be fair?
Yes.
I think that the planning staff, community development, has that issue on their radar, and regardless of the outcome of tonight's meeting, they will be investigating further.
Fair enough. As far as I'm concerned, then, we don't need to add it as a conditional condition.
Is there any more questions for staff? I'd like to close that, and then, and move on to discussion and possible action on this variant. No. Do you have any questions you guys want to... Okay. In that case, we would like to make a motion on the location of the accessory building as it relates to the rear building line. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I don't believe that. Is that the application?
No, no, no. We want to make a motion whether we're going to adopt a motion as a condition to the variant.
So we don't have a motion on the table yet. So if somebody wanted... I'm going to take a liberty here, and somebody can say, "So moved," immediately after, if that's the way that you would prefer to do it, and that is, make a motion to conditionally approve VARZ 22-006, with the condition being that the proposed accessory structure is not closer than the rear building line.
So moved.
Don't we have to make a motion, the board member?
That's the motion and the second, right there. That's what you need for this particular one.
I need a member to second.
I thought I heard a motion and a second.
I did not. I apologize.
Okay.
Okay. Take a vote on the variance request as modified by the motion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. That ends our meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Could you announce the time, Mr. Acosta, please?
Sorry, yes, it's 7:... I was looking at the time. 7:23.